Everyone, go ahead and get the meeting started here tonight. Welcome to this city council study session on June 9th. Just want to say that we are also representing the successor agency for the community redevelopment agency, Marina Valley Housing Authority, Marina Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. I now call this study session meeting on June 9th to order at 6:03 PM. All right, and we're going to go ahead and have a roll call, so Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, Councilmember Thornton?
Present.
Councilmember Marquez?
There.
Councilmember Cabrera? Mayor Protem Baca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here, thank you so much, Madam Clerk, staff introductions, please.
Pat Huck is not a city clerk.
Next person, please.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, City Manager.
Michael Wolf, interim Assistant City Manager, Director of Polycor Works, City Engineer.
Manuel Mancha, Community Development Director.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Hey, is there any other department heads there? Okay? No? What about Manuel, or? No, okay, all right. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Just to remind everybody, this is a study session item, so we're actually going to be talking about the land use concept for the general plan. That's actually our only item to discuss tonight. So if you do have any public comments, we welcome those public comments, but it does have to relate to the land use item. Any person wishing to address myself as the mayor and city council on the scheduled item must follow the teleconference procedures and wait to be identified to speak by myself. Members of the public will be limited, because we have several speakers tonight on this item, will be limited to one minute per speaker, except the consultant who will provide a overview and presentation. Once we... Okay, can you mute your mic, please? Thank you. Okay. So, once we actually have the presentation, the consultant's gonna have the presentation, he's gonna go through all of the slides, we're gonna wait, we're gonna, he's gonna finish the presentation, and then we'll go ahead and we can ask her questions, and we'll do one round of that, and then we'll go to our communications and requests. I will just let everybody know that, you know, I hope that we can keep our comments respectful towards each other, and we'll go ahead and get going here. So we'll go ahead and have the first speaker, we have actually a long list of speakers tonight, so we're just gonna crank them out, and then I'm gonna list, I'm gonna say three at a time, okay? So George Hague, followed by Emily, and then Cassie.
I don't see, I don't see George Hague logged in, Mayor.
Okay.
So I'm gonna let Emily.
Yeah, next speaker's Emily.
I have no comments, I'm just here to attend and listen.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. And then Pat, if you can make sure, next time, when speakers request whether they're gonna speak or not, okay? All right, let's go to Cassie. Okay, next speaker is Jason. Do we have Jason?
I don't see Jason on the list.
You mean he's not here?
No. I don't see him on the attendees, no.
Okay. That's fine, I'll look, thank you. We have, how about Al Marshall? Okay. Okay, not here. All right, next person is Seymour Hart. Okay, not here. Jeff Lee. Oh, there's Jeff. Go ahead, Jeff. Okay. David Slosson. Who I believe is a board member, the Water District. Okay. Brian Grimm. Or Byron, I'm sorry, is it Byron or Brian Grimm?
No.
Okay, that's odd, okay. Did, we sent it, we sent out the meeting, the ID, right? And you gave him the password?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alex Pinelli.
Oh, oh, he's here, Alex is here.
Okay. Go ahead, Alex.
Oh, thank you. My, I, I'm just very interested in what the next phase of the general plan's gonna look like, especially what, what, if any, expansion in the sphere of influence. I have some property in the Moonlight Rim area. I remember in 2016, there was a discussion about perhaps doing some significant annexation on the north side of the city. I understand that that was fairly expansive, and there was some pushback, but in the discussions that I've had, there are a number of landowners that are not as vocal, who are interested in expansion, and joining into the city of Moreno Valley, and so I'd like to understand that a little bit better, and how it relates to the 2040 general plan, thank you.
Great, okay, thank you so much, Alex, and then if we don't get to your specific issue, or if we just address part of it, and you don't feel like we're addressing all of it, well, either way, we're gonna have a staff member from my office reach out to you, so that way we can open up a case and follow up with you, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Robert Ben, followed by Roy Blackard and Tom Jero.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Robert.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, I'm, I was a little bit confused, so I hope I got this right, but I was, I had my comments about the EIR update, and...
Okay, well, yeah, go ahead.
I was concerned, you know, when I, when I listened to the, the planning commission meeting, what struck me was that the only person speaking for the city staff was the city attorney, it was nobody from Economic Development, it was just our new interim city attorney who was speaking, which kind of surprised me, but no surprise, once we got started, we got 45 minutes of legal speak. Now, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't speak, legal speak, but I tried to stay with them the best I could, and, but what I could figure out was that nowhere in there did I hear that would mitigate the EIR update, to mitigate to a level of insignificant, the massive amounts of air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions this project will create. So here's the deal, this is the same huge project, the same massive increase in traffic, the same air pollution, and the same greenhouse gas emissions, nothing here...
Thank you, Robert, thank you. Okay, next speaker is Roy Blackard, and I want to remind everyone, this is on the land use item, okay, that's what's on the agenda tonight.
We don't see Roy on the list, Mayor.
Okay, he's on my list here, but I guess he's not on the attendees list here.
No, he's, he hasn't logged in yet.
Okay, all right, Tom Jero.
I am here, am I transmitting?
All right, go ahead, you're on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, council members, no break problems tonight, I had a LMS app last week, you know, I, I want to thank Mr. Warren, he sent me a number of documents, which I just picked up a short time ago. I, generally, I'm in agreement with the land use element as recommended, with the exception, I'm not very favorable about additional residential and central Sunnymeat. The old Sunnymeat area, I think you added fuel to the fire, I mean, that, that is a classic downtown corridor thing, and should be looked at as a, ultimately, a true downtown area, mixed-use commercial office, and, you know, I can accept some residential on there, there's jobs to support it, so, but on that, I'm pretty good to go with everything, and I thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom, I really appreciate it. All right, next speaker we have is Daniel Salas.
He's here.
Daniel Salas Lopez, I think it's...
No comment, thank you.
Okay, no comment, okay, thank you so much. All right. No more speakers, we're gonna go straight to our item.
Mayor, George Hague was in, but he has a phone number. He was the first speaker.
Okay, we, okay, we already called his name, so I'll allow it right now, but next time, you know, we've called the person's name, and they don't answer, then we gotta move forward.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead, George.
Hi, Dan. And nobody responded, are you hearing me now?
Yes, we can, you're on.
This, this meeting needs to be redone for the public, the items that you're gonna be talking about were not made available to the public for this meeting. You can go back 40 days and look at a G-PAC meeting, and they were there, but for this meeting, we can only speak on those things on the agenda, and they were not made available to the public, nor was that they updated, made available. Downtown Center, I'm in favor of that, Moreno Valley Mall, Community Center, I'm in favor of that, residential density, the survey by the citizens wanted to protect the hills, please do not build on the hills, the office commercial concept, please eliminate the commercial, that's just gonna be gas stations, fast food, there's already 125 homes right in the middle of that, and you're gonna end up surrounding them with gas stations and fast food items. I sent you an email on disadvantaged communities, that should be an overlay on every map that...
Thank you, George. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we're gonna go straight to our item, which is review of preferred land use concept for the general plan update, and we'll go ahead and have a report of the Community Development Department, and like I mentioned, we'll have, once I call on the Community Development Department, the consultants will do their presentation, they're gonna go through the entire presentation first, and then we can, we will ask them questions afterwards, okay? We'll do one round, and then after that, we'll go straight to our communications and requests. Okay, so that's the process for tonight. So, Community Development Department, go ahead. That's Mr. Mancha.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, this item before you tonight will be presented by Senior Planner Chris Hornsby, he will give a brief introduction on the general plan update, and then introduce the consultant for the presentation.
Okay. Okay, is Chris coming? Chris, can you please accept that on mute?
Yes, I'm sorry, there was a little technical problem. Mayor Dr. Gutierrez and members of the city council, the general plan update is a little more than one-third of the way through the process with the adoption of the update on schedule for May 2021. This evening, the city council will be reviewing and commenting on the draft preferred growth concept, which is the culmination of the work to date. The presentation will be provided by Andrew Hill, Principal of the Firm of Diet and Batia, and without further ado, I'll have Andrew take it away.
Great, thank you, everyone, good evening, I'm just gonna share my screen with the presentation, so please let me know when you see that. When you can see it on, yeah? Yes. Okay, great, well, thank you, everyone, as Chris said, my name's Andrew Hill, and with Batia, the, of the study session tonight is to receive comments from the city council on the draft preferred plan concept, so I have a quick presentation to set up for that, I'd like to provide a little bit of a project background and an update on the status of things, and then to introduce the draft preferred plan concept, including its role and purpose, how it relates to the vision that the city council approved back in February, and its key components, and then we'll give it over to comments from, from the city council. But first of all, let me start with a little bit of background, since the general plan was last comprehensively updated in 2006, the world has changed. You know, in terms of, of demographics and social changes, baby boomers are now becoming senior citizens, and Moreno Valley is now a majority Hispanic community, so as a society, we're becoming older and more diverse, the economy is changing too as well, think, you know, the rise of internet shopping means that there's less and less need for physical stores, and at the same time, the workplace is changing as well, with more people working at home, and as we've seen over the last few months, that trend is likely to increase in the future. And then there's new technologies that have come online since 2006, think about smartphones, Uber and Lyft, things that didn't exist 15 years ago, and there's more technology waiting in the wings, think about driverless cars, they're already on the streets in Arizona, and they're coming to California soon. And then, of course, there's climate change, we're already experiencing more frequent and more severe wildfires, and average, higher average daily temperatures, particularly in the summertime, so all of these factors are things that the general plan needs to consider as we update it. At the same time, there's also new state laws that have come online since 2006. For example, Senate Bill 375 promotes compact growth in areas with good transportation access as a way of avoiding sprawl and improving air quality. There's also SB 743, which requires the use of vehicle miles traveled for evaluating traffic impacts, and then there's a range of new housing laws aimed at facilitating housing production in order to produce the statewide affordability crisis. To accommodate its share of the regional housing need, Moreno Valley needs to plan for about 14,000 new housing units by 2029, and about 5,000 of those need to be at higher densities that are typically affordable to lower, lower-income families. And so, in view of all these emerging issues and these new state laws, the city has undertaken to update the general plan, the housing element, and also to prepare a climate action plan, and we've begun work on this, as Chris just said, a little third away from process. The first phase of the work really focused on understanding issues and opportunities, and as part of that work, we prepared a series of existing conditions reports on, on background conditions, and we did outreach to the community to, to develop a vision for Moreno Valley in 2040. Then in Phase Two, we explored different concepts for land use, transportation, and community design that could help move that vision forward and make it a reality, and all of that work has led to the preferred plan concept that we'll be reviewing with you tonight. So overall, to date, nearly 1,000 people have participated in the process, and that's informed the work that we've done, we held five community workshops at different locations around town, because of the COVID pandemic, the fifth workshop had to be converted to an online format. We also have done two citywide surveys, we held six pop-up events at different locations around the community to meet people where they were and, and get input from them, and we've held four meetings of the General Plan Advisory Committee, which also presents an opportunity for public comment, and then, at the end of May, we met with the planning commission to get their feedback on the preferred plan concept as well. So let me talk now about the, the preferred plan concept, we'll introduce you to it. It is designed to, it is designed to respond to opportunities and constraints that are identified in the existing conditions report. It implements the vision for 2040 that's been developed with, with input from the community, and which you all reviewed in, back in February, and it really is, is intended to guide the general plan update and environmental review that'll happen in the subsequent phases of the project. This map represents that preferred plan concept, and it incorporates several changes to the land use plan based on community input. It also accommodates the, the regional housing needs, and, and the projections, community-wide by 2040, are for 20,000 new homes and almost 40,000 new jobs. Implementation of this concept would improve the, the ratio of jobs to housing in the community, currently, it's about 0.78, that would improve to a better balance of one-to-one, almost, which means fewer people commuting long distances outside of the community to jobs, more people being able to spend more time in Moreno Valley with, with friends and family, and the reduction in, the improved quality of life and the reduction in pollution that results from that. So, you know, the Phase One resulted in a four-part vision for the future of the city, which we reviewed with you all back in February, but just to refresh your, your memory, this vision involves, first of all, creating a dynamic local economy with successful businesses in a range of different industry sectors. To do that means creating a flexible land use framework that can accommodate job growth over time, it'll also involve partnerships with local businesses and educational institutions for workforce training to make sure that local residents are qualified for the new jobs that'll be created here in, in Moreno Valley. The second part of the vision involves creating vibrant gathering places for the community, and this means town centers where people can gather to shop, to dine, to do business, or to have fun. It also means sports and recreational facilities, particularly for, for youth and for families, and it means making sure that, that these, all of these gathering places reflect the cultural diversity of Moreno Valley. The third component of the vision is livable neighborhoods that offer a range of different housing options that are affordable for people of all ages, at all stages of life, and at all income levels. It also involves safety on the streets, safety near our schools, and safety in the, in the community, and this livable neighborhoods concept of the vision involves creating opportunities for active, healthy living. And then the fourth component of the vision is about community identity, it's really building a sense of local pride and increasing sense of place, making Moreno Valley a place where people will choose to live, to work, and to play. So, in order to move that vision forward, we developed a range of different concepts with input from the community, and we conducted a survey about community preferences. Let me walk through the concepts with you, touch on what we heard from the community as well. So the first concept involves creating a downtown center, this would be located at a community around the Nason-Alessandro intersection, but in a wider area that also includes the hospitals and the Equabela specific plan area. The idea is that the downtown center would be the primary hub and a focal point for the community with, with easy access to all parts of the city. It would be a regional draw with activity day and night, it would have architecture and design to rival anything in the region, and to really set downtown apart. It would accommodate a performing arts center, sports, civic, and other entertainment facilities, there'd be an opportunity for a Central Park recreational opportunity, and it would integrate, as I say, the hospital complexes, but also connect to Moreno Valley College, Lake Paris, and other local destinations. This concept really is, it, it enjoys really strong support from the community, it's an opportunity, you know, it moves the vision forward, helping to create that, that dynamic economy by allowing for medical office expansion, allowing for, for new shops, restaurants, hotels, possibly a corporate campus, it definitely contributes to the vision statement in terms of moving, of creating vibrant gathering places, the town center, or recre, or sports and recreation facilities, the Central Park, all of these are, would contribute to that vibrant gathering place, plank of the, of the vision, and it would definitely build up a Moreno Valley's community identity, making Moreno Valley a destination city. This is a big, bold idea, as I say, it really enjoys strong support in the community. It would take many years to fully realize this vision, the area is about 1,200 acres, about 80% of which is vacant land now, and so, it'll, and, and there's almost 60 different property owners in the area too, so it'll really take careful consideration about the arrangement of where the different, our hotels, the, the corporate campus, for example, where they would go and how those uses connect together. Fully realizing the vision would, would take longer than the, than the 20-year timeframe of the general plan, but the plan can, can definitely take steps to move the vision forward. So what we're proposing is that, in the context of the general plan, this concept would involve defining the range of different uses and activities that are desired for the downtown area, and then creating a concept diagram in the general plan that shows the, the location of, of these different uses within the area. We would also develop a development program and phasing that would be used to guide, to guide the environmental review, and there would be policies in the plan to, that would call for the creation of a, of an area plan and flexible zoning tools to guide subsequent development, and the policy would also allow for the reconfiguration or redesign of those uses, so long as the overall development program is not exceeded, and this would provide flexibility and allow accommodation of market demand over time. The second concept is one that we're calling a center mixed use, and this involves creating two new community-oriented centers that would complement the downtown center. The idea, these would be located, as you can see on the map here, in the, in the greater Moreno Valley Mall area, and also in the, in the area of the district. The idea here is to broaden the range of uses that are allowed on those properties in, and, and, and allow for redevelopment and new development at key locations that would be visible from the freeways. This concept would allow more flexibility for the property owners to respond to, to market demand, and it would, it would definitely contribute to the dynamic economy, move the vision forward in that way, and because of the visibility at these locations, it would also increase the, the prominence and, and, and the community identity at this location. So, as we say, there's, there's an opportunity here to provide a range of new choices on those sites, to create inviting gateways at those highly visible locations, to strengthen those identifiable landmarks, and to attract not only local residents, but also travelers on the, on the freeway. The challenge around this concept could be existing lease agreements at the malls that, you know, would make redevelopment, that could pose challenges for redevelopment, and there's the potential that, that the centers could, could compete with a downtown center. And so, what we're proposing in order to implement this center mixed use concept is to create a new land use designation called center mixed use, it would provide for a range of different uses, so that could include housing and hotels, and entertainment-oriented uses, cultural facilities, and all of this would be in an integrated pedestrian-oriented mix of commercial uses with higher-density housing on site, as I say, retail, dining, entertainment, offices also, and the, the permitted residential density would be around 20 to 38 dwelling units per acre. And so, this concept would, as I say, allow more flexibility to, for the property owners to develop in response to market demand. The third concept involves creating mixed-use corridors, in terms of opportunities, these, these corridors would, three of them, one is along Sunnymeat, one is along Alessandro, and one is along Paris, they would link the downtown center and the mixed-use centers, they're already the city's major transit corridors, and so densification, adding housing and other uses along these corridors would, would strengthen those transit corridors, make, and help to make service more reliable and, and more frequent. The, the idea would be to promote a mix of residential, commercial, and professional office uses that cater to the everyday needs of, of local residents along the corridors, and the designation would focus retail and commercial uses at, at nodes, at key intersections that have high visibility. The opportunity here would be that there's a number of vacant and underutilized properties along the corridors that represent a good opportunity for redevelopment, there's an opportunity to provide a, a range of different housing types that, that offer more affordable options for... that that offer more affordable options for for current and future residents. And as I say, concentrating new development along the corridors, putting more people along those transit corridors increases the the rely, the the chance for reliable, frequent service as well. The challenge would be to avoid an oversaturation of retail, for example, along the corridors. And I think along Sunny Mead Boulevard development could be more challenging because there's existing development which would require a redevelopment, whereas along Paris and Alessandro, there's vacant parcels that might be more easily developed. So this would be invented by creating a new corridor mixed-use designation that would promote a mix of housing and commercial uses along the corridors. It would include a mechanism to concentrate commercial uses at the at the corners and limit them to no more than fifteen percent of the acreage of the block in order to prevent that oversaturation of retail. And it would allow a mix of uses in either horizontal format so that the different office and retail and housing could be in buildings side by side. Or, but it would also allow in a vertical format where you might have housing over over retail. Again, the idea would be to allow flexibility for the property owners in order to allow them to respond to 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 market demand. The allowable density range in the corridor mixed-use designation would be about fifteen to twenty-five dwelling units per acre, which represents townhomes or smaller-scale apartments. The fourth concept is what we're calling business flex. This applies at the western entry to the city along Alessandro, adjacent to the to the freeway and near the March Air Reserve Base. In this area, as you can see on the map, the yellow is designating airport land use regulation regulations areas where the uses allowed are strictly prohibited. So housing, schools, hospitals, and gathering places are not allowed in those areas. The idea here would be to create a designation that allows for a range of different industrial and commercial uses that would be consistent with the airport's land use regulations. We know that there is, based on the market study that was done for the project, a demand for businesses active in production, distribution, and repair. So that could be small-scale logistics, but it could also be, it could also be, you know, car repair or a furniture building or that kind of, that kind of thing that's that's relevant to to urban areas. Part of this concept also would involve development standards to make sure that these new flex commercial uses are integrated with the surrounding residential neighborhoods that exist to the north. The opportunity here is to to create an inviting gateway at the western entry to the city to support a job creation with flexible space for businesses that could be adapted over time and to cater to the demand for production, distribution, and repair in urban areas. The challenge is that most of this area is located in in an airport safety zone, where, as I mentioned, the housing, schools, and hospitals are prohibited. And so introducing these new commercial flex uses, we need to think carefully about compatibility with existing neighborhoods to the north. In order to implement this concept, we would create a new business resident designation that would allow for a range of different businesses active in production, distribution, and repair. They may have a supporting office or a commercial space such as a a gift shop or or a showroom. The permitted uses in the business flex zone would be compatible with the airport land use regulations. And this would involve performance-based zoning to ensure that there's an adequate buffer. And by performance-based zoning, I mean, we would use the environmental review to determine noise standards and visual screening to make sure that there's an appropriate buffer between these business uses and and the residential neighborhoods to the north. And the final concept that's been implemented on the on the map that we're reviewing with you tonight is called the freeway commercial office concept. The idea here, this applies north of Highway sixty at key intersections between Moreno Beach and World Logistics Parkway. The idea would be to focus new retail and office development at highly visible and highly accessible locations along the freeway and include design standards that would require development to blend with the with the rural heritage intended for the area. The opportunity here is, again, to move forward, to move the vision forward by creating inviting gateways at high-visibility locations and and to attract visitors at Moreno Valley's easterly gateway, help make the city a destination in the region. The challenge is that opportunities for office, we understand from the market study that was done, are limited over the next ten to fifteen years, and that destination retail at these locations could potentially compete with the downtown center. However, this concept would be implemented with with a new freeway and commercial office designation applicable at those nodes on the north side of Highway sixty. Additionally, there's a potential for some residential designation refinement as we work on the housing element over over the summer. I wanted to point out that there is, outside of these change areas that I've been talking about tonight, there is existing capacity for traditional single-family homes, approximately forty-seven thou- of forty-seven hundred new low-density homes outside of those opportunity areas. So there's lots of potential for for single-family development. The idea is that these proposed designations would also allow higher-density-focused corridors and the centers close to transit as needed to to meet those statewide obligations for the regional housing need. That's a, that's a shot of some, we, as as we work on the housing, I want, we may also consider some adjustments to residential densities. Quickly, a summary of, we reviewed these concepts with the G-PAC, we helped develop, develop with them, and then we reviewed the preferred plan concept with them, and they encouraged, they were generally supportive of these concepts. They encouraged us when we present them to you to tie the concepts back to the vision. They really did support, and as we heard from the community, the downtown center as a central focal point for the community and a hub to strategic area, to strategic areas. They also wanted to ensure that that the scale of development north of Highway sixty was appropriate, and that's why we talked about development standards and guidelines that would make sure that it's consistent with the rural character intended for the area. They supported the idea of land use regulations that provide flexibility over time, and they really emphasized that market demand should be a key consideration of the plan. And so we committed to to bringing some more data back to them at the end of the summer or at their next meeting. The Planning Commission, we also reviewed with them, as I said, on the twenty-eighth, and they also were generally supportive of this preferred plan concept. They agreed really strongly with the idea of downtown as a central focal point for the community. They encouraged us, emphasized that we needed to pay particular attention to the Moreno Valley Mall property and make sure that it remains a focus of the community in the future. They encouraged us to differentiate each of the concept areas so that so that they don't compete with other, with one another. And they also agreed that the residential units, as needed to meet the state requirements for housing, are an important part of the overall concept. So that is a very quick introduction to the preferred plan concept. I I think I'd like to pause now, turn it back to to the mayor for for comments from from the city council.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Andrew. Really appreciate it. I know you've done a lot of work also, and I believe it was Calvin, right? Calvin that you had as well? Yeah, you guys have been doing a great work with our G-PAC, with the Planning Commission, so I really do appreciate that. I've received a lot of positive responses. Just a, just to, can you go back to that one slide where it had the outline of, you know, it said the vision?
Yeah.
It was the second slide.
Hang on a sec. The one with the vision statement?
No, I think it had the vision. It was like a chart. It was an outline.
Perhaps this? A chart.
It was the second or the third slide?
Okay, very early, maybe this one?
It's not showing. It's just showing the M.
Oh, hmm.
I just wondered if you could, yeah, I was trying to see what that last part was. Okay, right there, the slide six.
Yeah, oh, slide six.
There you go.
Let me put that up. Apologies.
It's okay. Okay, so right now, so we're at the city council review stage. Okay, so we already had the planning commission review, the city council review, and then you're gonna do the draft plan, the EIR phase, more G-PAC meetings, so there's gonna be more opportunities for the public to come. And and just to make it very clear to the community too, there's no decisions that we're making right now. This is just a study session. So there'll be more G-PAC meetings and then draft general plan, housing element, that's what I was gonna say, okay, climate action plan, the draft, EIR, okay? And then the Plan Commission hearing, and then the City Council hearing by May twenty twenty-one. And would you say, Andrew, is this a pretty aggressive schedule?
Yes, it is an aggressive schedule, but so far we've, we've managed to stay on track. And as I've said, we've, we've done quite a lot of outreach and heard from a wide range of of voices so far.
Great. And one thing I was gonna say, and I honestly support the downtown concept, the whole idea, you know, of a center mix. I've actually been supporting that since, I wanna say, two thousand thirteen, I mean, about seven years already. And we've been actually doing this process even with the Nason Corridor Study. We've been actually discussing this for a very, very long time. I did have a question on the north end of the freeway. I believe you're going to call, you're proposing to call it the freeway commercial office designation. On that one, has there been any study to see, like, for example, like, higher ed or schools? You know, because it is kind of concerning a little bit that if we were to have retail or office there. I mean, office seems like it's going away, kind of, you know, especially now with a lot of the work at home and, you know, COVID nineteen. And then, I I don't know, I just, my fear is that the retail would compete with the downtown. So I'm wondering, you know, if maybe throughout some more meetings, you know, and you can gather more input, you know, I mean, is there, is that an option or maybe something else? Maybe there's something else that can, that I'm just not thinking about.
Right. I think it's a, it is an interesting point. As you, as you mentioned, the the Highway sixty corridor study looked at a variety of different options. I don't think that that, like, a college campus or educational institutions was part of that. I do think that perhaps we can look at reworking this concept to maybe broaden the range of uses a little bit. I agree with you, things are, the situation is evolving in terms of office space, in terms of retail now. And so perhaps we could look at, stick with the idea of of nodes adjacent to the freeways, but look possibly at at expanding the range of potential uses there to allow, you know, more flexibility to the property owners to respond to market demand. I think what we did hear from the community is, you know, a concern about maintaining the, you know, the the scale of the development consistent with with what people are looking for. And so we'd wanna keep with, you know, policies that require development standards and guidelines, you know, to to manage the scale in keeping with community expectations. But to speak to your point, I think we could look at a wider range of uses up there to provide more flexibility.
And I also like how in all of the designations from the freeway business, all of them, I just kept hearing that keyword flexibility. So, you know, that's the keyword flexibility and being flexible, you know, for different organizations or businesses that come to develop. I think that's, that's great. That's wonderful. The other thing I was gonna mention is, right here, let me see. Yeah, I I just think, you know, I think it's, it's very important that we do have that that flexibility and, you know, and not trying to, you know, put more barriers, right, for for a lot of these businesses and organizations that wanna develop certain land, but then they can't because it may not be zoned for that. So, you know, just giving them that, that flexibility is really, really important. I will just turn it over to my colleagues here to see, you know, if they have any questions for you. And and again, I just wanna thank you, you know, for for your hard work and, you know, talking to those thousand, you know, I think you said it was a thousand residents, right? You know, doing a lot of the community engagement meetings, you know, that you had as well. And, you know, you've done a great job, you know, with that. And and, you know, not everyone's gonna come out to it, and I guarantee you that even after the entire general plan is done, there might be folks that might say, well, I didn't want, you know, this, and and I didn't know that the city was doing this. But, you know, we're trying our best, we're trying our best to engage the public, and I know you are. You know, we've done media blitz, we've done, I think we even did a mail, we've done mailers to let people know about the general plan update. So, a- anyways, I just wanna thank you for that. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mayor Potembaka. Oh, okay, then she's, there you are. Oh, you just muted yourself, I think. There you are, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, G-PAC, for your effort, dedication, persistence in moving the general plan update at a satisfactory pace that has brought us here today. I'm very proud of the work our staff and members of the G-PAC have done. I'm very impressed, not surprised, I'm very impressed that you were able to stay on track. Andrew, if you can go back to the slide with the Alessandro gateway with the yellow lines?
Yeah. Bear with me one second.
That's fine.
The yellow lines, I think.
Do you mean the chart?
It was a page that had the Alessandro gateway, and it had the yellow lines for the flight path, I believe.
The aerial, yeah, the area of the flight path.
This one, right?
Yep.
Yes, yes. And I like that for District One, the Edmond area. My question, Andrew, is, did you take into consideration Box Springs Mutual Water Company?
Yes, we know that there are definitely challenges with the infrastructure there. And so as part of the next phase of the work, we'll need to look at specific strategies and and specific policies that can help facilitate this growth pattern. As we move through the process, we're starting with the general and we're becoming more specific. And so as we get into crafting the details of the plan, yes, you're you're absolutely right. Looking at the infrastructure questions that are needed to support this development pattern is is gonna be a key focus.
Yes, so if you could add that to the challenges?
Yeah.
And I thanked everyone, the staff and the G-PAC, because this is great, this is wonderful. So I just wanna say thank you to you also, Andrew. I know you're not part of either one, but thank you for the presentation and thank you for your leadership. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll have Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much. I'm gonna thank our staff and so much for working on this and thank you, Andrew, and your team. If you can go back to the slide that the mayor mentioned concerning the north end and the commercial office concept, just so we're on the same page. Yes, thank you so much. Okay, so this, you know, this area is filled mostly with residential or all-residential, and this is a community that consists of older adults and families. And I'm really supportive of designing a livable neighborhood. And what I'm fearful of, just to kind of also spend a bit, a bit more time on one of the points the mayor mentioned, is by making this commercial office, which would have restaurants and entertainment and 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 shopping, that it would compete with the shopping center on Nason and in Moreno Beach. It would compete with the Moreno Valley Mall, it would compete with Changas Prince Plaza, which are all along the sixty. Additionally, it would compete with the downtown area. And I just really think that I do not, I wanna avoid an oversaturation of And I just really think that I do not, I wanna avoid an oversaturation of retail and some of these other industries. I I do think that there's an opportunity here. Factoring in the demographic of that neighborhood and the community identity that is very unique to that end. That medical offices or some other type of industry that is not exist. And I really like the idea of the higher ed mayor, but what kind of is fearful for me is the expanding of the range of. Of the code so that we can then, I mean, of the zoning, so that then it could be. We're being responsive to the market demand that that's actually fearful for me because what I'm worried could happen ten to fifteen years from now. It's just that, that we end up creating a space that competes with some of the other in shopping centers and developments that have already. There, and so I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to think outside of the box of what could be utilized there. Especially this already zone for office. And I really appreciate you all switching that residential area back to residential. But I'm still kind of really focusing on this area that is purple along critique. You know, none of us would like to have any type of industrial or commercial or office in our backyard. And so this idea that right amongst all of those homes, it would be developed. It's it's still very problematic and I am just adamantly against. It as it looks right now, and I just wanted to voice that out there so everybody knows that I'm, you know, what what my position is. I'm open to having continued conversation with you all and doing my own research to to figure out what are some other things that we can utilize this space for. For things that do not exist in Reno Valley, because I think this would be the perfect location, since it is the entry to Reno Valley from from the east side, thank you.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Thornton, and you're and are you speaking to the light purple area or which or or actually the purple? The dark purple.
Yeah, the dark purple is the proposal to make a commercial office, this yellow part, there's holes there, so they.
Those those are the homes, okay, that's what your concern is, okay, got it. Okay, thank you so much for clarifying, all right, Councilmember Cabrera. Oh, it's a, there you go, oh, somebody muted it, there you go.
There you go, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Calvin, thank you, city staff. You know, this is a project that's been in the works for a really long time and, you know. It's a, it's really good to be here at the study session and, you know, see the process moving forward and how it's evolved over time. It's really exciting, so thank you guys so much for your work, I know you're dealing with covid nineteen and everything else on top of this. So, you know, just hang in there with us a little bit longer, we got a few more months of this and we'll we'll get done with it, so. One of the, one of the members of the public actually mentioned, you know, potential annexation. Of, you know, surrounding land, surrounding territories and. I believe this is something that has been explored in the past with Ritchie Canyon specifically. And I know that that didn't really go very well, but, you know, I'm hoping that these are things that we're still considering and keeping in mind. Over time, you know, perspectives and I ideas might change, so it it might be a opportunity. And the people who live in that area might be amenable to, you know, joining into Moreno Valley and also on the east end. Over off of Gilman Springs Road, the unincorporated county area, you know, that's another potential annexation opportunity. So just, you know, I think that's something that we should keep in mind and consider moving forward. Also, you know, we know that the population is gonna keep growing, Andrew, a question for you. So you mentioned that, you know, we have to hit this, these Rena numbers by twenty twenty nine. Have you done any kind of studies or anything to estimate approximately what our population is going to be in twenty twenty nine and? What the demographics are gonna look like?
Yeah, the population, we have a a sense of what that'll be, so. The the regional forecast is for about twenty thousand new housing units over the next twenty years. And with a average household population of three point eight, you know, that's that's almost eighty thousand people. So seventy five thousand new residents over the next twenty years, considerable population growth. As to what the demographics look like, that's a little bit more difficult, I haven't seen any projections in terms of the. You know, the ethnic composition or anything like that, I think that's a, we we can look into that to see if there's if there's anything more, but. The anyway, that in terms of just population growth, that's what it looks like. And the the aver- the average household size will probably continue to be above three, three. Residents per per household, I think it might get smaller than three point eight because. There would be a broader range of uses, so multifamily in the corridors, for example, or in the centers, that might bring that average household size down.
Thank you, Andrew, that that's helpful, so about eighty thousand, okay. And, yeah, as been, as has been mentioned by my colleagues. And you're doing a really good job of making sure that the land use is flexible, because we know that the economy is changing. Overtime is just gonna evolve even faster. And we saw that transition more toward e-commerce, you know, shopping online, using Amazon. We see what's happening with Sears and Kohl's and Macy's. And with covid nineteen, all of that was just exacerbated, that was sped up. So it's definitely a smart thing, I think, moving forward with these different corridors going down, you know, certain parts of the city. To keep that in mind and make sure that, you know, we actually capitalize more on the huge demand. And the state's desire for more housing, you know, Councilmember Thornton and I sit. On the Housing Economic Development Committee for the League of California Cities. And that's one of the conversations that has been happening for a long time, we know there's a housing crisis and we know we need more housing. And so I anticipate that there will be a lot more incentives and cutting of red tape at the state level to make sure that more housing is built. And I hope that we, as a city, will capitalize on that, to make sure that we receive any kind of funding or anything that will help us to achieve those Rena numbers. So I think that's just something that we we should keep in mind. And, you know, for the downtown, we have an amazing opportunity to have a real campus-like facility, a real campus-like. Can you hear? I'm being muted for some reason, but, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, so, yeah, with the downtown, you know, we have both hospitals, we have Moreno Valley College that can be connected through College Park Drive. Actually, Grande Vista Drive, and so I'm I'm just wondering, Andrew, have we by any chance reached out to these different institutions? Like Kaiser or U H S, Moreno Valley Unified with a new proposed school, the March Air Reserve Base with a potential. Disbandment of the J P A and what that's gonna look like, have we started reaching out and having conversations with these other entities?
Yes, we have had in the series of stakeholder interviews that we did in December, we spoke with the with the boat school districts. We have representation of Moreno Valley College on the on the G pack. So we have had conversations, we've started to make connections there, but absolutely, we do need to continue. Continue those conversations and and keep people informed about how the how the general plan is progressing and make sure that we take onboard feedback. As we refine the plan.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, so just a few more things I wanna mention. You know, Lake Paris, we have the Olympics, the rowing sports coming in twenty twenty eight, they're currently working on re redoing their marina. And so I think that's another thing that we need to keep in mind to see what kind of development they're gonna put there, if it's gonna be commercial retail. And how that would compete with the downtown, so I think that's very important to keep in mind and what else they have planned for Lake Paris moving forward. And so, just getting down to the end here, in terms of, you know, for example, industrial. The city has done an amazing job of bringing in a lot of development and that has resulted in a large increase in jobs. But with the economic development aspect of the general plan update, I think it's vital. How we're talking about education and more college attainment and increasing incomes. That we really pay attention to, you know, the current warehouses and the industrial that we have here in the city. And especially the temp workers, so the lower paid workers, we need to make sure that we're not just bringing in any jobs, that we're bringing in higher wage jobs. That lift people above the federal poverty line, it's vital, we have to focus on that. And just last thing that I wanna mention. Most of you might be aware that the California Air Resources Board is relocating to Riverside. And with that relocation, they're actually gonna bring a lot of their partners, like auto manufacturers and all kinds of auto companies. To this area and they're gonna be located right outside of the Moreno Valley border, right next to the University of California Riverside. And so I think we need to plan for that as well, to make sure that we can lease out buildings here in the city to those companies that are gonna come here. To this area and also house the employees that are gonna be relocating to this area. So with that, I think I'll I'll end my comments and my questions, but again, just wanna say thank you to everyone so much for being involved in this process.
Thank you, Councilmember, one other question that we actually had from a council as well was. If you could also factor in the growth of the older population in the demographic projection. So again, if you could factor in the older population in the demographic projection.
Yeah.
And that comes from a Councilmember Thornton, okay, and any other comments? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I wanna give a shout out to the staff and Andrew, you guys have been doing a great job. Couple of questions that were made, made to me was the infrastructure. Well, we're talking about all these, the growth, the city, buildings, retail, residential areas. Couple of residents that were concerned about the infrastructures. I know that when we do build the new track homes or a new industrial area, they they've always come out. To re widen the roads under their general, under their plans. Have you considered also, Andrew, the the infrastructure on on this G P? General plan update, I mean, general plan, basically, the infrastructures, have you have you looked into that also?
Yeah, one of the sections of the existing conditions report that we prepared. Looked at the baseline conditions for infrastructure and identified, you know, some areas where it's deficient. For example, we talked about the Edmond area and infrastructure deficiencies. As part of the next phases of the work, we need to drill down into the details and and get a better understanding of. Where the infrastructure improvements will be needed to support this development pattern. And making sure that we identify those needs and also identify potential funding sources. You know, that can support the development of that infrastructure that's needed to support the the future development.
Okay, great, and also the the property north of the freeway, a couple of my colleagues have mentioned about the development. A lot of the questions that brought to me was for the north residents is homes. Bigger homes, luxury homes in that area out there, stay away from an industry or or basically like restaurants. I don't think the freeway could actually handle any more traffic out in that area, other than the residential homes out there. And a lot of your residents in the north end would like to see more homes out there, residential acre homes. Where where people can come on and, you know, buy property that put their horses and stuff like that out there. So they, a lot of them have said they didn't want restaurants, and again, you don't put restaurants out there, because they'll be competing. Against the the downtown area, so eliminate those restaurants on the north side of the freeway. The Councilman Cabrera brought up the good point of better paying jobs out here. The the freeway concept that you had, that freeway commercial office on that side of town. On the far west side of town. If they do build anything out there, it it's right off the interchange of several freeways, where where that would be awesome to have. Companies that pay good, located in that one area of town. Not only that, it can handle the 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 traffic also, so that that's a good concept there, having that only in that one area and nothing else. The business flex concept is good, I think, I think, I think that's something that we should. To look at and maybe a belt on that concept there, also, I know that the new state laws. Are we gonna requiring a different types of transportation automobiles? You are looking at that also, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
So all I could say is, with all this going on, and I know that we're, I hope we're not rushing it. But I just hope that we're able to get this done and do it right the first time, so we can continue without being stopped by. Somebody going to court or trying to stop it or or, we just need to get it right the first time. And I think my colleagues would agree that we we need to do that, nonstop, once we start this project, continue through it. Until everybody's happy, and other than that, I want, again, thanks staff and you, Andrew, for for the work. And let's get this thing going, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Marquez, so I believe, I believe everyone was able to speak on that. So what we'll do is, I I again, I wanna thank you, Andrew, again, appreciate it. We're gonna go to our second item, it's just communications, if we have any communications. Go ahead and put your, your hand up and and then I can see and then. We'll go from there. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting tonight then at seven oh nine P M. Okay, thank you again, really appreciate it, take care, bye.